The audience participants and general public should be aware that any or portions of this open meeting may be recorded by audio, video resources, all some of this meeting may be rebroadcast periodically by WIPS or other outlets. Persons wanting a DVD copy of this meeting should contact WIPS or the Selectman's Office, small fee will be charged. All right. Let me see if I can bring this back up. The first thing on the agenda is we have a public meeting for adopting a proposed bylaw change that was posted in the Patriot Ledger. We can make 12th, 2020. And it involves the FEMA. Pat, do you have any input on this? Like, I was told by Jen, the Assistant Town Administrator, that this was basically had to be done so we would be in compliance with the new changes to the laws, so people can get flood insurance if they need it.
Yeah, I didn't really look at this, but I know other towns have needed to do it in order to adopt the this, I'm not sure if it's to adopt the newly revised flood maps, or if it's to adopt some bylaws that get you into compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program, but either way, it is typically required in order for people in the town to secure flood insurance from FEMA.
I believe it's actually both, Mr. Chairman, and my understanding of these. When I worked for former Senator Headland, Marshfield and Sitewood specifically had to do these several years ago because they were on the front line of the updated plane, so I think that's exactly what they're for, more or less, so that folks can get flood insurance if they need it.
State also provides a template of these type of bylaws to make sure that, you know, you don't miss anything. So we worked off that template as well, and it's been signed off on by all the state people that needed to look at it. So we comply with all the requirements.
Perfect. Does anybody else have anything to add on about these proposed articles?
Mr. Chairman, I talked with Tom Rubel this morning, who I guess is one of the ones that's going to administer this. He said basically the same thing, that there's no real changes, other than it has to be done in order for the town to get grants that may come along and that type of thing, that there's no major changes from what's in place now.
Right, listen, do we have anybody on the phone or anything from the public that wants to say anything?
Do we need a motion to open the public hearing first?
I suppose we're making that motion, Jared?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, Jared, balance all the Chris to open the public hearing.
John will second it.
All that in favor?
Got a roll call, sorry.
Yep, we got a roll call, all right, Charlie?
Yes, in favor.
Jared?
In favor.
John?
In favor.
All right, Mike, I'm in favor. All right, so we've heard what was, what was said by Tony and Pat and everything. And if it's just being in compliance, so if people need to have the flooded. Can I get a motion to adopt the language for articles forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven?
Hold on, hold on one second, so.
Do we have to read them?
No. But what you have to do, well, you don't have to read the full one, but I think you should just at least read the summary of what each article does, as it appears after each article on the front of the notice. So like the one sentence that appears after the bold, like Article forty-five.
All right, now I gotta, I gotta.
And then also, so again, you got a roll call vote, and then you have to, you have to do it for each article. So you gotta do it three times because we have forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven.
You gotta find it on microphone.
Mr. Corbett?
Yes?
Rob Rosa, four seventy-four Bee Street, just had a couple of questions about this. Thing is, I don't know if there's anybody here that's going to be able to address them.
Shoot out the question, maybe somebody has an answer, you know what I mean?
I have not had a chance to see all the maps. And I guess the first, my first question is, how many properties in the town are going to be affected by this? Well, the court, basically since two thousand, and I think it was two thousand and thirteen, we did our first one. Myself and Greg Tansey have been doing letters of map amendments for several people in this town. Because most of the flood zones within the town are A zones. And the problem with an A zone is that there is no, there is no elevation that you can actually calculate without going through major, major steps. And the reason why FEMA has A zones on their, on their, on their maps is because they will come right out and tell you that they don't have the information to be able to calculate the, the actual flood height. Mr. Brennan, you can, you can ring in on this and check me if I'm wrong, but that's basically, that's basically always been our understanding of the A zones. And in, again, since basically two thousand and thirteen, myself and, again, through several of the companies that I work for, we've, we've been able to get people out of the flood zone based on these letters of map amendment, and I'm just wondering how many of these, how many of these residential and commercial properties are going to get tossed back in? Does anybody look at that?
Have an answer?
So I just, I just looked at the maps real quick. I mean, there's not a lot of residential property that is going to be affected, but like you say, Rob, it's all Zone A. But it doesn't, like, it's going to affect many properties.
Okay, that, that's kind of the problem. FEMA went through when they redid the FIS profile for, I read the profiles. They did some serious work on this. And to not actually calculate the information was kind of a waste of time. I can't see this being like a one-month, two-month thing. This seems to, in my mind, this seems to have been a, at least a year-long process. And number one, nobody really in the town knew about this. Number two, I'd like an actual count of how many, of how many properties are actually going to be affected by this. And this is a big deal. I'm not saying that I'm not in favor of this. I mean, anything, anything that will help our town come into compliance, that's, that's big. If it's going to help us be able to apply and get grant money, that's a big thing, too. But I'm also looking at what and how it's going to affect everybody going down the, everybody going down the chain. So.
Rob, I got a paper here that I think was part of what Chrissy sent out, I'm not sure, but it's listing it by panels, which twenty-five oh twenty-three C shows eighty-nine parcels. Twenty-five oh twenty-three C shows ninety-one. Well, these are all the same panels.
The big question is, how many of those are getting put into the flood zone and in relation to the ones that have already been taken out? You know, do these maps take into consideration the, the, the letters of map amendment that have already been, that have already been established since two thousand and thirteen, not just by any company that I work for, but any other surveyor, engineer, or architectural company that's done letters of map amendment?
I guess I don't, I mean, this is just speculating, Rob, I don't know. I mean, if you've went, if you've gone through the process of a Loma, doesn't that usually, I don't understand how a new town zoning by law could supersede.
Because the FEMA maps are changing.
Right, yeah, I mean, they do, how many years now, every two or three years now?
No, the last one was two thousand and twelve for, for basically the South Shore. Last one was two thousand and twelve, Hingham fought it, Quincy fought it, Marshfield fought it, and they got a, they got a lot of it changed and a lot of properties taken out. But what I'm looking at is, in this town, the majority of the flood zones are A zones. And with those A zones, there is nothing that you can calculate, you can only trace a line that comes from that map. And then when you do a letter of map amendment, usually you get, and again, I'm going to say ninety-seven percent of all the Lomas that I've ever done for properties that are in an A zone, FEMA will take the structure out of the, out of the flood zone. And they will, they'll come right out and say that we don't have enough information to calculate it. And it's basically, it's a caveat on the back of the actual letter that says, currently, we do not have enough information to calculate the current flood height, so we were, we are going to pull your structure out of, out of the flood zone, but in future years, if we gain that information and change that, change that, that flood zone, we may put you back in.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm thinking of putting back in one way or the other?
Not necessarily, not if they actually calculated an elevation. Because the, the A zone is a digitized line. It's not an actual physical line that can be measured on the ground. In a E zone, an A zone with an E stands for elevation, I believe. But the AE zone actually has an elevation attached to it. You can measure that on the ground, and typically you can just go to the, to the, to the town's topographical, to our town's topographical maps, and you can tell what's going on. You can also, you know, if you get out to the property and you see that there's substantial changes and stuff like that, you can see that, too. But nine times out of ten, when we're looking at, you know, when I've looked at properties for, you know, elevation statistics or letters of map amendment, you look at the topographical maps and it's, you can usually see that they're, that they're out, that they're, that, that these things are out. And unfortunately, they're being put in by FEMA and the banks that are requiring these because of reverse mortgages, first-time mortgages, or refis are now telling people, oh, your house is in a flood zone. And well, it wasn't when I first bought it, well, now it is. You know, and now a lot of these people that, again, if they refi, let's say they refi in two thousand and thirteen, we were able to get them out, or somebody else was able to get them out of the flood zone. Let's say they go to, they go to refi again, and it's back in. Now they have to go through that whole process again because it's an A zone, and five years down the line, they're just going to change it again, you know, or something like that. These, it's just, that's, that's my, that's, that's my, that's my issue with this, and just to know that, to know that somebody actually looked at the residential properties that are affected by this, and there's a, there's a number of them, you know, if, if, if somebody actually looked at it, that's really kind of what I'm questioning.
I have, I have something here. I, I got something from FEMA, you know, the, you know, Selectman's Office and everything. And I was copied on it. The Highway Department, Tom Rubel. Yeah, I mean, and this, on a quick count, there's fifty, like fifty properties in Rockland, they're listed on it.
A total of fifty properties?
Yes, on a quick count, give or take fifty, plus or minus.
All right.
And the last couple that were added, there were two added last year. And the records that I have here started in nineteen ninety-nine.
And. These are properties that were taken out?
I don't see that.
There's a lot more properties in the town that are, that are in, that are in the flood zone than, than fifty. But in this area where they're changing the flood zone, where they, where they recalculated, where they recalculated the FIS profile, I'd like to know how many are within that, because this has, this has the, the potential of severely affecting people. Again, I, I've tried to look at the maps before. The map that was made available to me was, was one in Abington, had nothing to do with our town, and then talked to Doug, Doug found the maps. I just, I, unfortunately, I worked for eleven, so I did not have time during the day to get in there to see these maps or to get a copy of, so.
I think Jen would like to say something.
I was gonna say, jump in, Jen.
Thank you, John. Thank you, everybody, sorry for hopping on late, I had a little trouble with the link. I want to back up, and I'm sorry, I see Tony's on the call, so Tony, please jump in wherever you feel I need to be corrected. But the purpose, just, I think I need to back the conversation up from what I'm hearing right now. Rockland is part of the National Flood Insurance Program, so that makes flood insurance at an affordable rate available to the residents of Rockland. FEMA did, in fact, update their maps. In order for Rockland to, to remain a participant in the program, we need to adopt a bylaw and adopt the new maps as well. Previously, Rockland had included in their Board of Health Rules and Regulations a floodplain policy, which I'm not even sure, and this is no, this is probably not that uncommon for communities that did it this way originally. The trouble with it is that it tends to not get enforced, because communities forget that they're even in their Board of Health Rules and Regulations. So it's highly preferable to have the, the floodplain overlay bylaw in place. This has been, the draft was done by Bob Galvin's office, it's been vetted with DCR that has approved it, and it is the better way to go. Either way, it has to be done in order for us to stay in the program. And I apologize, Rob, I didn't hear the beginning of your point. If there's an issue with some of the panels, or you feel that needs to be an amendment, I think that's something we could probably look into down the road, but the long-term threat of it is if we do not adopt the bylaw now and update the, the new maps, we will no longer be eligible to participate in the program.
And that's a good reason to do this, that's an absolutely good reason to do this. I'm just trying to figure out why this is really the first time that anybody's really hearing about this. How long has this process been going on?
I cannot answer, I don't know.
How long have you been working on it?
Um, probably just the past couple of months when we were notified by DCR that the maps were being updated and we needed to update our bylaw, which we then later found out we didn't have a bylaw, and then we had to do some digging to find out that it was actually in our Board of Health, Board of Health Rules and Regulations, which I think goes exactly to the point that it wasn't being enforced because people weren't even aware that we had floodplain rules and regulations.
I know about it, I knew about it in two thousand and thirteen.
Okay.
And there's, there's a lot, there's just, there's a lot of things that just don't make sense, and I'm just, I'm trying to understand why, it just, it feels like it's, the whole thing is getting presented in a very expediated manner, and I just, I, it just feels, it, it feels a little hanky. I, I, it's like where, where everybody, most specifically the planning board, is being told that they have to do this, but yet nobody even really had a good opportunity to look at it or understand it, so.
Yep, to answer that question, Rob, part of the issue, too, was the delay from FEMA getting the maps out. When you were notified that we received the maps, was the first that we had seen them as well. To kind of compound the, the problem, FEMA, in this current crisis, FEMA has refused to push back the dates by which communities need to adopt the updated maps, which doesn't help any of us, because probably rightfully so, we're not all focused on FEMA's flood maps at the moment. But they will not budge on that.
If we had a regularly scheduled town meeting in a, in a normal year, we would, you would have had to go back and, do what? Have us another town meeting to adopt all these bylaws?
I'm not sure I follow the question, Mike.
Well, because, you know, this, this is just happening so late, but if we had regular town meeting, that was, would have been at the beginning, beginning of the month. You know, I mean, FEMA got everything out so late to, to the towns and stuff like that, where we had reschedule a special town meeting just to adopt these bylaws to be in compliance?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think we ultimately did get the maps in time, even if we had a regularly scheduled meeting. Currently, the other issue for a lot of communities, or those communities that are concerned they're not going to be able to have a town meeting prior to the July twenty-second effective date of the maps, we right now are not in that situation.
See, now, that's not what I saw. On the documentation that Doug, that Doug gave me, it said that it was basically, there was a ninety-day appeal period, and nobody from the town said boo. Nobody said anything, nobody said anything about it. So this has been going on a lot longer than, than the last couple of months that you've been working on it. If you look at the documentation that Doug did give me, the dates go way before this. We're talking September of last year. So the FEMA maps were generated, and all of this was started, and the town was notified, but then the ninety-day appeal period went by, nobody said a word, and now it's coming upon this, and now we're being forced to have to vote on this. I'm just trying to understand why nobody, why nobody really knew about it. I'm just trying to understand that, because this is going to affect the town. You know, and again, I appreciate the, I appreciate the, the, the bylaw, I appreciate the flood, the flood bylaw that has to get passed. And I guess another question is, do we have, can we approve the flood, the floodplain bylaw without approving the maps? Until someone, and it's, until someone else looks at it, whether we have Pat Brennan, or whether we have, again, we have people in the town that work with this on a daily basis, people that volunteer their time to be able to look at this.
So I think, one way or another, Rob, and I, I, you know, unfortunately, we can't go back to whatever ninety-day window there was to.
No, we can't, it's done, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna approve it, and it's done.
That horse, unfortunately, is out of the barn, so, you know, again, working in the legislature like I did for a coastal senator, frankly, I don't think Rockland is as affected by this as, say, Hingham Hall, Co-Hasit, Norwell, those, I'm sorry, Sitewood, Marshfield, towns that are literally on the coast of coastal property. I understand folks are affected by it, and it's something that needs to be addressed, especially the maps, I mean, if the maps are incorrect and could have been appealed, they, they should have been, but unfortunately, we can't go back in time and, and appeal them. So to that end, you know, what do we do? Do we let these pass by and force residents in Rockland that are currently in the NFIP out of it because we are no longer eligible as a community? You know, unfortunately, I think that's what we're faced with now, and.
No, that, we have to, we have to approve that, I have not, we, that, that should be approved, because that's going to help people get flood insurance at a less affordable rate. That's, that, that does nothing but help the, help the community. Just the sheer fact that if you're putting people into a flood zone that weren't in a flood zone before, you're forcing them to either A, get flood insurance, or B, have to pay the money to try and get back out, which if it's an A zone, they're just going to change it in five years and put them back in. So it's like.
But now, your point, like, I'll, I'll use my house as an example, I'm not in a flood zone, suppose these maps, put my house in a flood zone, now I'm a little annoyed, maybe the town could have appealed it, I don't know. But can't I then apply for a Loma to dispute that anyway?
You, you can, you can, but the problem is, is that with an A zone, it's a fifty-fifty shot. It's a fifty-fifty.
Than, than the odds with, with the federal government usually, so.
Typically, typically with an A zone, it's easy to get out, typically, but.
Rob, I know you've done a few of them, and I have done in my office, probably fifteen, maybe as many as twenty properties that have gone through the process, and I think every one of them has been taken out. There's quite a few on Hingham Street, Sawmill Lane has a bunch of them.
That's far and away from what we're dealing with, though, I think.
Well, I don't think we had any choice, I think we've got to go ahead and approve this, and then work with it later, and if there's something that can be done later, and maybe Jen can take a look at that and see what happens, I don't know, but I think at this point, we've got to pass this and move forward.
I have something here, too. Rob, to, to your point, that things should have been done a long time ago, yeah, because the town was notified according to the stuff I have, August twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen. And the ninety-day appeal process started September eleventh, twenty eighteen, according to this letter.
Twenty eighteen, I thought it was nineteen, so it's even, so it's two years.
And the letter I have back from FEMA is January twenty-second, twenty twenty. So during that whole time, there's probably a lot of stuff happening in the town, as we all know, that everything got pushed by the wayside.
Yeah, actually, if you look at the time period, yeah, I guess, yeah.
You know what I mean, so, yeah, everything was, you can say the ball was dropped, but who was driving the ship?
True, true. No, okay, now, now, now I get, now I see some of the time period, I see how it's, I see how it all works out. And I know who was dealing with the original floodplain bylaw, or whatever it was that was supposed to, okay.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, I mean, yeah, things maybe should have been addressed a little bit differently, but a lot was going on, and that was the top, this was not top, top priority.
No, back at that time, you were, you were a hundred percent right, you were a hundred percent right.
Yeah, and Rob, from at least late winter through now, we were working with DCR and Bob Galvin's office on the, on the overlay district, and whether or not to have, you know, even getting ahead of the game, so it wasn't complete, you know, there wasn't necessarily a ball that was dropped, that I'm aware of, I think.
Saying the ball was dropped, I'm saying it was hidden behind somebody's back for a long time, and just kind of throwing on everybody now. So that's what, that's kind of what I'm, I'm a little annoyed about, but it is what it is.
Sorry, Mike, I missed it, and when did you say the first notice came in on this?
The town was notified August twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen. And the ninety-day appeal process started September eleventh. You're muted. You're muted, Jared.
There we go, all right. I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to belabor the point at this point, unfortunately, it is what it is, and.
Yep.
Yeah.
If, if I might add, Mike, it's okay with you?
Yeah, go ahead, Pat.
I think Rob's main concern is about the people that have already paid to, for Lomas to get their properties out of the flood zone. You know, what happens to those people with the new flood maps? It, it depends, but for the most part, FEMA will revalidate those Lomas and, and letter map changes with the new flood maps, if FEMA has not done the detailed study that would show that they should actually be in the floodplain. FEMA right now, in Rockland, there's thirty-one Lomas that have been approved, one Loma R. And there was a revalidation of a Loma from a previous effect at the flood map, so there's thirty-three total right now that have been removed from the flood zone by one of those processes. And chances are, if FEMA did not do an actual detailed study with flood elevations, getting it to the AE zones, those Lomas would, I'm going to guess, there's a good chance that they'll be revalidated, and people won't have to repay to take their properties out again.
Thank you, Pat. Any other questions? All right, so Tony, if we proceed with this, we have to basically start read the article, or at least the beginning of every, the three articles here?
Yeah, just the one sentence after, and then what you're doing is you're voting not to approve this bylaw, but to recommend its passage to the town meeting, so any article, you know, vote to, vote to recommend to the town meeting that the town meeting adopts each of the three articles.
All right, so on Article forty-five here, will a town vote to amend Article Three, Establishment of a District, four fifteen dash three of the Rockland General Code Zoning Bylaws by adding a new district entitled the Floodplain Overlay District to the existing list of zoning districts as followed, that would be number P, the Floodplain Overlay District, or take any other action relative thereto. They should, everybody has a select, a board selectment, a proposal to change to the town.
Okay, I'll make a motion to recommend approval, that's Jared Allen's alacrity.
And I will second it, Charlie.
Okay, so. All those in favor, Jared?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes, in favor.
John?
Yes, in favor.
Uh, Michael, yes, I've recommended to proceed to town meeting.
Randy said too, yes.
Thank you, Randy, when did you jump in? I didn't see you.
Uh, about five minutes af- after I said I was almost home.
Thanks for joining.
I'm the AAO one oh three oh, and on the picture it says Randy on.
Okay. Alright, uh, Article forty six. The town vote to amend Article three establishment of districts four fifteen dash four. The zoning map of the Rockland general code zoning bylaws. By picking the boundaries. I'm trying to read on my phone here. Enumerated zoning district by adding the zoning. District entitled floodplain overlay district to include all areas of the Plymouth County flood. Insurance rate map issued by the. Federal Emergency Management Agency. Date of July twenty second, twenty twenty. And identified as a special floodplain hazard located within the jurisdiction of the town of Rockland. And designated as Zone A, and AE, the exact boundary of the district may be defined. By the one hundred year flood elevations shown on the firm and further. Defined by the flood insurance study report dated. July twenty second, twenty twenty, on file with the town clerk. Any other actions relative there to.
Make a motion to recommend approval, Jared Alenzola.
John will second it.
We'll take a vote, uh, Jared?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Uh, Michael, yes, you recommend Article forty six to proceed to town meeting. Alright, Article forty seven. Or the town vote to amend Article. One V permitted use by inserting the proposed new zoning overlay districts as follows. Alright, this is the floodplain overlay district. And. It's a long one, we have.
Hey, don't have to read that.
Yep, we have the purpose, A, B. So, you know, it goes on for pages.
Make a motion to recommend approval, Jared Valenzola.
Second, Randy.
Alright, uh, we'll take the vote. Uh, Jared?
Yes.
Randy?
I thought I seconded, Randy, yes.
Yep. Charlie?
Yes, in favor.
John?
Yes.
Uh, Michael, I vote in favor to recommend Article forty seven to proceed to town meeting. Alright. And that basically closes the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, Jared Valenzola.
John will second it.
I will take the vote, I'm most favorite, Jared?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Uh, Michael, yes, to close the. Public hearing. Alright. And now, what do we have here? Alright, now that the public hearing is closed. We have, uh, new business. And before us, we have, uh, the design, the site plan and design review for, uh, the new elementary school project. That's coming before us. So who would like to take the lead? To explain the school.
Good evening, I'm Lorraine Finnegan, I'm the project manager with SMMA. With me today on the line are Michael Dowhan, our landscape architect, Chris Racine, our civil engineer, and Mariana Hernandez, our project architect. Sean Burke from PMA, the OPM is also on the line. I'm going to let Mike and Chris run us through the presentation and, um. They have an agenda slide, so I'll let them leave it out for you.
Uh, I'm going to try to share my screen now, just. Host, our disabled participant screen sharing, okay, could the host enable participant screen sharing by chance?
Uh, can you do that first, Lisa?
Yep, it says that they are available. One participant can share at a time, so unless someone else is sharing, we should be okay.
Let's try it again.
Here we go.
Try one more time.
Okay, I'm changing it now.
Yep.
Is it working? Okay, good.
It sure seems to be working. Want to see that screen?
Yeah, it's not in presentation mode yet, Mike, but yes.
Alright, we have it up there.
Mike, are you frozen? Mike Dowhan.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, but it's not in, it's in, not in presentation mode yet, can you go to, uh, presentation mode, please?
Yeah, I'm in presentation mode.
Okay, it's on now.
There you go, alright, this might be a little choppy, guys, I apologize ahead of time. So anyway, thank you for, uh, for letting us, um, share our design for the Rockland Elementary School. Is this switching okay, can you see the agenda now?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, we'll walk through this and, and as we get through, through these steps here, we'll stop it, uh, after every step. To make sure that everybody has an opportunity to, um, to ask questions.
Uh, while you do this presentation, get this thing rolling. I don't know, just so everybody's aware, we probably will not be voting on. This whole school. Building tonight, you know, since you still have to go to zoning and, and get some zoning changes, but then when you come back to us in June.
We understand.
We'll have their, um, decision. So we can incorporate all that.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll go through a quick overview and, and walk through all these elements, as I said, and then we'll stop in between each one for questions or comments. Uh, you probably saw in the package, the project, uh, is a new combined district right elementary school for grades one through four. It's located at Brian Duffy Way, one Brian Duffy Way, at the location of the existing Memorial School. It's three elementary schools in the town that, um, it served kindergarten through four, Memorial, Jefferson, and Esten. The idea is to take all of the, uh, grade one through four children, put them into this new seven hundred sixty student building. And the Esten School will be used for kindergarten only. And the new building, seven hundred sixty students, two stories, about a hundred twenty thousand GSF. Uh, and Mariana later on will walk us, uh, through all the materiality of the building. The school includes outdoor learning spaces, new athletic fields, new vehicular and pedestrian circulation. Parking, and of course stormwater management improvements, that we'll walk you through all of that stuff. Quickly, uh, the existing conditions, we're all aware of what's going on here, number one is of course the existing school. Five, you see the five over there, that's the existing football field where the new school will sit. Um, you can see where it sits in terms of Lower Reed Division, Taunton Avenue, existing entry circulation, the blue and. Red lines, uh, signify site access and ingress, getting into the site, and then once you're in the site, of course, the yellow line signifies car and bus circulation. As you know, everybody shares, cars and buses both shared Duffy Way, they both share the same route, buses come in first right now. And, uh, car drop off is after the buses have left. The red, um, indicates pedestrian circulation, some students come in from, uh, the little. Right of way from Lower Reed, they get walked in through there, and other students walk along the sidewalk coming in from Taunton Avenue. The topo, this is sort of important, uh, to, uh, for, for later on in the presentation. The, the existing building FFP is about one nineteen, it's about four feet higher than the field is right now. And it's about seven so feet higher than the existing baseball field, uh, behind the building. Also, the solar orientation is important when you see the building, the new building layout. I want to show this context plan because it's important to. Uh, understand, uh, a brief overview of why the building is where it is, okay? So, in the simplest terms, there's, there's an existing building A, and then adjacent to it is the existing field. Uh, the new building gets built on the new field, on the old field, excuse me. The new field gets built where the old building is, it's just flipping, it, it's, it's really, it's oversimplifying, but it's that simple. We just flip the buildings and the fields. Any questions about existing conditions so far?
No.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to move on to the proposed site design and broken it into two pieces, movement and circulation, and then sort of use areas. So here's the rendering, the latest, most current rendering of the site. Uh, you can, as you can see, the new building sits again where the, uh, where the existing field is. The new synthetic turf field and part of the parking will sit in the approximate location where the, uh, existing building is. When we're designing these sort of things as a sort of an overview, sort of view from thirty thousand feet, we're always trying to focus on developing an infrastructure around the building. Uh, you know, that comple- really complements the building, frames the outdoor spaces, frames the building, and ties all the program together. So as you walk through this thing, you'll see that there's some recurring themes. Through here. So the building is labeled there, uh, you can see all the, uh, different use elements, if there's any questions on any of the use elements, please let me know. Softball field and the boys' baseball field are existing to remain, as you know, the, the, the girls' softball field will get new lights. The new synthetic turf field will also be lit. Uh, in lieu of standard bleachers, uh, we're going to take advantage of that topographic change between the. Elevation of the existing baseball field and the elevation of the new building, and we're terracing seating rather than building. Uh, bleachers that are, that would create a real big vertical element. You can sort of see the vehicle circulation, which I'll walk you through in a little more detail in just a moment. That slide didn't come up through right, this is, well, this should show pedestrian bicycles, bicycle circulation, I apologize, this, this line work missing on here. Pedestrian and bicycle circulation, uh, will come in through the new right of way along.
Mike, you can use the drawing tool.
Of course, uh, how about this, can everybody see that? Can you see my?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, excellent, so the. The right of way that's, uh, pedestrians only right now is going to be turned into. Uh, two-way for cars, I'll get that a little bit more in a minute, this was supposed to show some pedestrians bicycle circulation, there's bike racks at the front entrance. There's bike racks over by the playground, and there's bike racks over by the rear entrance. All of the cir- all the, um, main entrance doors and all of the site amenities, the ball fields, the existing fields, the proposed fields, the. Playgrounds, everything's all connected by a pedestrian circulation network that's all ADA compliant. Bus circulation, so all buses will come in from Taunton Avenue and will take a left. And bus drop off is behind the building, there are seven bus drop off spaces back here behind the building. Buses can exit either through the front of the building or out onto Reed Street. All the students that get dropped off by bus enter the building from this rear door. Right over here, and there's a playground area for those students to play in in the morning and congregate in the morning. Again, I don't know what happened here, but passenger vehicle circulation, passenger vehicles. Uh, are only allowed to access the front of the building, where I'm moving the cursor through right now. This furthest north roadway along the property line is a two-way road, all this parking through here is designated as parent drop off in the morning. And for visitor parking in the afternoon, and then parent pickup in the afternoon. This secondary access through here is drop off only, and it's one-way circulation for cars coming in from Lower Reed. And it's parallel drop off through here, so it's sort of drop off, kid, kids get ac- access directly to the sidewalk and into the building. So all the students that get dropped off by car enter the building from the front entrance, and they also have a small, uh, playground. Uh, to the west of the building to play in before, before school begins. Uh, any question in terms of circulation so far? I should mention that. Nothing but buses are allowed to go in the back of the building, save, of course, except for, uh, emergency vehicles, the, uh. The circulation has been designed so that delivery trucks do not go to the back of the building either.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yep, go ahead, ask.
Apologize, um, um, the bus group goes around the back of the building, do they all sit? Park, unload. And wait, or do they take right off and go right out, and do they just go out Reed Street, or they coming back across the front of the school?
But they have two different functions, Mike, if you want me to answer that. In the morning, they pull up empty and keep going, in the evening, they pull up, stack, and wait for the kids to come out. So for drop off, it is instant, for pickup, they stack and wait. And then with respect to, um, ingress and, and exit from the site, Mike, I'll let you take that if you can get back to the slide.
Yeah, I'm trying, there we go.
I, I have a question, what is to stop the cars coming in from like, uh, Taunton Ave? Uh, Division, Division Street?
And, and taking the left?
Yeah, and going into that like, two-way area where you have the visitor parking and everything.
Over here. Cars are allowed to do that, cars are allowed to make that move from Division Street and Taunton Avenue, they're allowed to make that maneuver into these spaces.
Then they'll just proceed and exit out towards Lower Reed Street?
They can proceed to exit, this is, since this is two-way, they can either pull in and then leave back out by Division or Taunton. Or they can leave by Lower Reed, that's correct. That's correct, right now, we have signage, we're, right now, there's signage indicating for all vehicles, for no, no vehicles except buses. To take that hard left behind the building, um, and there's some ongoing discussions whether or not it'll just be signage and striping or something more. Hasn't been determined yet.
And, and there'll also be signage, um, at the one-way parent drop off. Area so that people coming from Taunton or Division Street cannot make that left turn into that one-way access in front of the building.
And just to be clear, when we say signage, we're talking about do not enter signs.
Correct.
Right.
So, not just any signage, it's a do not enter sign.
So it's back to me with the bus thing, so we're coming around the back and we're leaving out Reed Street, we, or we coming out like in that yellow was the bus thing and showing it coming back. But they can also come in front of those parking spaces in front of the building.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
Where the yellow is the bus route, correct, everything in the yellow?
Yellow is the bus route, that's correct.
So you have it leaving Reed Street, when it's come around the back, they unload, and they go out to Reed, Lower Reed Street, straight ahead.
Correct.
Or it looks like they can go right and back around the front of the building.
That's correct.
So they'll be doing that as people are dropping off in those spaces to the left. Dropping off kids and pulling into those parking spaces to come in the building, correct?
Well, I think the anticipation is that the buses will do the drop off ahead of the, uh, parents, the way it is currently done.
But they have, they have three options here, Mike, correct, they can go out to Lower Reed. They can go straight on Colonel Duffy Way, back out to Taunton. Or they can make the turn into the drop off area, but it's highly unlikely they'll make that turn if they don't need to.
Correct. Correct.
Why would we even want to allow them to go back up to that drop off area? If the bus is empty. Uh, I would think you'd want to get them out of there as fast as possible.
It's certainly feasible to just send everybody out through Lower Reed if that's what, if that's what the community desires, absolutely.
So sometimes there are buses that they'll have for a field event, um, or there'll be a bus that's coming later. They wanted to make sure that there was the ability to pull a bus in there if we, if they wanted to do that operationally.
That's fine, I'm just worried about the jam in the morning, let's just say.
Yep.
The front with kids cutting through, and you know they're not going to follow the walk signs, they're going to cut through and all that, and if you get buses. Coming across the front of the building in the morning that are empty to leave. You, you could run into some backup, uh, danger, I mean, whatever it is, I think the. The idea of getting the buses out of there quick is that Lower Reed Street area, shoot them right out. I think the idea of getting the buses out of there quick is that Lower Reed Street area, shoot them right out and bye.
Yep.
Any other questions regarding circulation?
Not at this time.
Okay. I'll walk you through the outdoor elements really quickly and then we'll stop again for questions. The front entrance is designed to be a pedestrian-only plaza sort of entry sequence from the parking and drop off areas. It's a raised tableau in the sense that all this gray area where you see here is all at the same elevation as the building entrance. The roadway rises up to the tableau, drops back down. It's a six-inch raise through here, so it creates a real pedestrian-oriented space through here. And then there's some transition, we're using plant material, trees, different elements like rocks to create sort of a transition from the really flat paved area into the building. The drop off walkways are here and here. Along this drop off walkway, there'll be an ornamental metal fence that sits along this planted buffer area to prevent children from cutting across through here. It funnels everybody over into this main entrance. We're using large boulders as a means to keep the cars through this area and the boulders also create the pedestrian spaces through here. Axon metric view of that front entrance. We left the trees out so you could understand the space a little bit better. There are two outdoor learning environments that are created in the spaces between the academic wings. Both of them will be programmed the same way. They have large group areas where there'll be raised seat walls with plantings behind them, areas for teachers to congregate larger groups of children. There'll be small group areas as well and there will also be tables set out there with, you can see over here by number nine, number eight and nine, there'll be tables set out into these spaces with boards along the wall for outdoor teaching opportunities through there. These spaces will be completely enclosed, we're still working on the design of that enclosure. It may incorporate some sort of planters. It may not, but regardless, it'll be completely fenced in with two means of access and egress that are going to be gated with panic bars and fenced tall enough that you can't reach around from the outside. Both of the spaces look exactly the same. This is a rough rendering of when you're inside one of those courtyard areas looking towards the entrance to the building. The outdoor learning environments and the rest of the site are all, we're gonna have a lot of interpretive signage so that we can tie the education curriculum into the site. A lot of the stuff will be tied to the lead improvements that we're doing to the site, pedestrian circulation, heat island effect, bio retention areas, things like that. There'll be signage throughout the site that explains what we're doing. Courtyard area is under development, this is that center part of the building. Again, be a series of precast seat walls throughout, a raised turf berm in the center and some important place outdoor seating through here that's opposite the same sort of element on the inside of the building. It's kind of a view, a development view of the interior courtyard space. There won't be any large trees or plantings in here for maintenance purposes. Everything will be low, shrubs, perennials, ground covers, ornamental grasses, things that are easily maintained. Lots of paved area for kids to move around.
I noticed in your plans that in a lot of the courtyards and open space areas, like you had poured concrete in those areas, like where you'd be walking?
That's correct.
It said something, I can't remember at the top of my head, like color A or something like that, what color is that?
We haven't chosen the colors yet, they're probably gonna be lights in dark grays. I would say a light gray and a dark gray. You know, yeah. There's nothing outrageous. We could end up with browns and tans to match the building, but generally I try to just go with light gray and dark gray to add some visual interest to the ground plane, because otherwise it's a pretty big space, you know?
Okay, I was just wondering, Mike, I couldn't, I gave a quick look, I didn't see like it, you know, anywhere that would indicate what the color was. And I know sometimes when you color match concrete, it doesn't always look pretty.
Yeah, that's articulated in the specs, which we provided the plans, but we didn't provide all the specs. So, that's articulated in the colored concrete specification. Playground area is being developed with, there's two playground areas, the south playground, the north playground. The south playground is the larger one, it'll have, right now it has two large play structures. It'll be, the ground plane treatment will be a combination of synthetic rubber, fall zones and there'll also be an area closer to the building where there'll be a basketball court, some four-square benches. And this is all vitaminius concrete through here. All these areas you see through here where the play structures are, is all enclosed, it's all fenced in. Two means of access, egress, two gates, so that there's always two ways in and out of all these outdoor spaces. And again, all this area through here is all resilient rubber surface. There's a few equipment precedence of what the type of equipment that's gonna be out there, these play spheres that you see these children playing on, sort of net-type systems and some more vertical structures. And the ground plane treatment will consist of graphics, four-square, things like that and other types of graphics to add some visual interest for the students. Hopping over to the synthetic turf field area now. So, it's gonna be a typical synthetic turf field, 50% rubber, 50% sand. The tuft height will be ideal for soccer, football and possibly field hockey if that's desired and also lacrosse. It'll be lit, as you can see, this sort of precedent image up here is actually from Holbrook. It's gonna be very similar to this in terms of the light fixtures in the field. They even have a bulldog logo like you guys, so that's why I included that there. Here's some images of the terrace seating that we're talking about putting on the east side. So, there's a lawn area where people can set up a lawn chair or a blanket to relax or you can sit. These are 18-inch height, each of these sections are 18-inch height, so these also act as seat walls. And this will again be in lieu of a typical traditional leisure setting. Any questions so far about the site design? I'm gonna turn it over to Chris Racine now, he's our civil engineer. He's gonna walk everybody through the stormwater management aspects of the project.
Thanks, Mike. So, under existing conditions, there is a perennial stream. I'm gonna start off with stormwater management and then I'll just kind of touch base on, go over the rest of the site utilities. But for stormwater management, there is an existing perennial stream that starts north of Reed Street, as Mike's indicating there. Just prior to Reed Street, it enters a concrete headwall and then proceeds into a 48-inch reinforced concrete pipe culvert that is routed under the road through some adjacent properties, residential properties. And then essentially is routed north to south, right through the center of the site. And then it continues, it's piped all the way underneath the rail trail, which is just south of the southern property line. And right after the rail trail, the stream resurfaces at a stone end wall. The existing site drainage, there's catch basins, catch basins that are conveyed via pipes to the existing 48-inch RCP culvert. There's also pipes from the adjacent high school and middle school campuses that also tie into the 48-inch RCP pipe. There's also some stormwater in the, from the existing baseball field on the western portion of the site. That is the, kind of the only area of the site that just flows overland to the south corner of the site and does not get directly into the 48-inch RCP pipe. So, under proposed conditions, we are proposing to replace a portion of the 48-inch RCP pipe and that's due to some areas of very shallow cover that occur under existing conditions as well as due to some conflicts with the location of the loading dock and the depress grades associated with that, which is on the west side of the building. Right where Mike's showing right there. So, that's why we are proposing to replace a portion of the existing pipe with a new three-foot-high by five-foot-wide concrete box culvert. The culvert itself has more capacity actually than the existing 48-inch pipe. It's also lower profile, so it gives us more flexibility to route utilities over it. It increases the cover over the pipe as well. So, the actual stormwater components within the site, in order to mitigate peak rates of runoff, we're proposing a number of surface bio retention areas, which are those reddish hatched areas. So, those are surface systems that'll be essentially planted with with some grasses and small shrubs. They're very shallow, they're only one to two feet in depth total. They're essentially intended to, water essentially flows overland to them. They're not, we're not conveying pipe outfalls to them, it's capturing surface runoff. It's intended to filter through the plant material and the soil to provide treatment, which is also required. I'll just take one step back, so we're designing the system to meet both the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook as well as the regulations in the Rockland, the Rockland Stormwater Bylaw as well as the planning board rules and regulations. So, those systems, two of the systems to the right, we are able to provide enough depth to groundwater where we're proposing them as exfiltration systems, meaning the water will pass through the plant material and the soil and will infiltrate into the ground to provide recharge. The other system to the north, we don't have quite enough cover over groundwater, so that'll be a line system. The remaining boxes that you see in blue, those are subsurface detention systems. And I've got a couple slides after this that just show some graphics of what those look like. Essentially, they're, actually, Mike, if you wanna go to that right now. So, to the left and to the lower photos, those are the examples of some bio retention areas. As you can see, they're very shallow, you know, aesthetically pleasing. We actually, in one location, we have a kind of a boardwalk crossing through it, which is, you know, a nice way to incorporate kind of learning and kids into nature while also having, you know, while also serving a purpose. Mike's just showing that area in the upper right. And then the picture in the upper right there is just an exciting photo of the chambers that'll be installed underground, essentially plastic chambers wrapped in filter fabric, underlaid by crushed stone with crushed stone on top as well. It's essentially acting as a, it's essentially acting as a one big area for water to be stored and then eventually discharged. If you could just go back to that plan, Mike. Thanks. So, as Mike alluded to at the, in the existing conditions description, the existing building finished floor elevation is at around 119. We have the proposed building finished floor, the upper level at 119 and the lower depressed level where the loading dock is at 117.5. And we chose this elevation to maximize our separation to groundwater. There is shallow groundwater, relatively shallow throughout the whole site as well as to be able to tie into the new three-foot-by-five-foot box culvert. So, all of these systems, the subsurface systems as well as the surface bio retention areas, after they collect the water, they will be routed, any overflow gets routed through via pipes to the new box culvert, which also ties in at the southeast corner of the new synthetic turf field into the existing 48-inch pipe. So, by setting the elevation where we did, it allows us to efficiently tie into that new box culvert and also to get the cover we need. So, we are also rerouting a portion of existing pipe from the high school and middle school campus as well as a portion of pipe that runs actually just north of the existing basketball court. It's not highlighted on this plan, but there's a pipe coming right from that upper corner that runs right through the proposed building. So, we're rerouting that around and tying it into the new box culvert as well. The synthetic turf field will have, it has a series of perforated under drains, panel drains essentially that capture stormwater. We have an outlet control structure and that water is routed, conveyed to the, one side is conveyed to the existing RC 48-inch pipe. The eastern side is conveyed to the manhole that ties in the new culvert and the existing pipe. So, we are maintaining existing drainage patterns. The eastern side, sorry, excuse me, the west side of the field, that overland flow is still going to be flowing in the southwest direction to the southwest corner of the site. We are matching or mitigating peak rates of runoff for all of our storms and providing treatment as well as meeting the other stormwater criteria to the maximum extent feasible for redevelopment project, which this project qualifies as. If you understand this plan, Mike. So, we're also, from other site utilities, we're gonna be, we're providing a new eight-inch ductile iron water loop that ties in at Reed Street, at the Reed Street, the access drive connection at Reed Street. That will, the new eight-inch water line will route around the building as well as in front of the building and it will tie into, we'll also have a connection point at the Taunton Avenue Division Street intersection to provide redundancy in case, you know, there's an issue that they need to repair or shut a valve down to service the pipe. We've got new hydrant locations around the building, which we've preliminarily coordinated with the fire department. We will continue to coordinate with them as the design is finalized. We have a series of new sanitary connections coming out of the building as well as kitchen waste that is coming out at the, in the loading dock, the service area on the west side of the building. These sanitary pipes will be conveyed via gravity to the, there's an existing 15-inch sewer main that runs actually right through the baseball field west of the new synthetic turf field. So, we are tying into that sewer main as part of the project. We also have new gas service coming off of Reed Street as well as new underground electric telecommunications and fiber. Routed from overhead poles and then underground to the school itself. Think that's it, does anybody have any questions regarding the stormwater or site utilities?
I have a question. I guess the basic going Colonel Duffy Way with it. Like now I, uh, I've seen in the past, like a lot of the people that live. That border that, that backyard comes up on Colonel Duffy Way, they get a lot of water.
Yep.
With all this work and all your new drainage and everything, will the conditions improve for those people?
Yes, the condition should improve for those people. Under existing conditions, there's a small portion of lawn on the school property that actually pitches towards those properties. And apparently also during large storm events, because there's no real curb there along the edge of Duffy Way that. Uh, there, there are times in water from the roadway intersection from the Duffy Way Taunav Division Street intersection. Water actually just makes its way into that little area, um, behind their properties. So the, the proposed design will have, uh, vertical granite curb. All around the site and obviously in particular in that area. Uh, we've also, we also have, there's a small retaining wall. Actually right where Mike is highlighting it at the property line. And that is because, because we've raised, uh, you know, the elevation of the building is where it has to be. Uh, and to meet, you know, grading ADA requirements coming out from the front of the building. There is a bit of a grade change between the, between Duffy Way, the realigned Duffy Way and the abutting properties. So there is a. A cast in place retaining wall with a screening fence on top of it. Right, it's, it's just a few feet within the, within, uh, the school property line. So there is no, there will be no runoff from the school property. Getting onto that parcel. Uh, we'll have catch basins along that curb edge, everything will be collected in those catch basins. So there should be no runoff, any, there should be no runoff, we should be reducing the amount of runoff, uh, going to those properties.
And, uh. Like you said, with these, uh, bio detention areas, like area two, you have, um. That elevated walkway going through, so you, that's basically just gonna be a, a foot high for the two high at the max.
Yep, yeah, uh, it's, yeah, it's only, I think, two, two feet. Uh, Mike, I'm not sure if we show, we're probably gonna have to have, you know, some, we have edge, edge. Railings there, yeah, so we. There'll be handrails there, um, but yeah, it's, it's only gonna be, you know, two, two and a half feet, I believe at the most, I can check those elevations.
Alright, well, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, if kids are walking that live or live close enough by if they're walking down there and jumping off it or whatever, you know what I mean? I'm like, how high is it?
Yeah, yeah. It'll be high enough that it'll require guardrails, we're gonna widen it a little bit, so it's not just a walkway. And in the, some of the widened parts where the guardrails are, we're gonna incorporate that interpretive signage, um, discussing the, the sys- the bio retention systems in and stuff like that. So we're gonna sort of incorporate all that, that signage and education element into the, into the walk. And that's a good spot for it, because that's the main walkway for any students walking to the site. They'll have to cross that, they'll have to cross that boardwalk. The idea behind it was to pull the walkway away from the curb of the, of the driveway. So as, as kids are walking to the school. Uh, you know, they're walking in the east to west direction towards the school, but there's an up, there could be a time where cars are leaving in the opposite direction. So we didn't want the kids right up against there. So by pulling it away, it, A, creates a safer environment for the kids and also creates a really nice experience. It's not too many areas where you see, where you have to cross a boardwalk over a bio retention area to get to your new school. So we thought it was a really nice design element, too.
Yeah, I was ju- just wondering and making sure it wasn't that high where kids are gonna be.
No, two feet, I think, you know, two feet.
Hang, hanging off it or jumping over the handrails, you know, I mean, the six foot drop, you know?
Yeah, well, the worst they're gonna do is end up knee deep in mud, so.
Been there before.
I have a question. So. When do you think construction would start and roughly? And are you going to be able to maintain the traffic flow? To Memorial Park while this is under construction? And what's the, kind of the plan for that? You may be covering that later on down the road, but it just kinda struck me as we're talking about this right now.
Uh, yep, so we have, we have established some preliminary, uh, phasing plans for construction. And the intent is to keep Duffy Way open, uh, with what, essentially twenty four foot wide drive aisle to maintain two-way access to the existing Memorial Park School. Which will be, uh, operational, kept operational throughout construction. So those, wh- where you see the parking, the, uh, doesn't show up on this plan, but the existing parking spaces along Duffy Way. Kind of the, the. There'll be a fence just north of that, so that th- those spaces will likely be contractor parking. And then there's enough width, um, to, uh, to provide a twenty four foot wide drive aisle. Between that and the property line. So we have, we have thought through some of that. As, as well as just, uh, pedestrian circulation, um, as well as parent drop off and bus drop off during construction.
Okay.
So you would, it would basically be just a road with no parking for drop off?
Correct, yep, so, right, so those spaces that are on Duffy Way now would likely be utilized by, you know, by the contractor. We've. Some of the spaces along Reed Street. We, we, on, on the, on the phasing plans that we've developed, we show, um, that is being staff parking as well as we'll have a temporary. Uh, we'll expand an area south of the existing school. It's, it's the existing Batumis area that the, that the town or the, the parks department uses for some material stockpiling. Uh, will it be expanding that a little bit and converting that to temporary parking as well? Um, so we've got, we've got that diagrammed out already.
Will you be using the right of way? Out to Reed Street?
No, no, that will remain, that will remain closed off. And we had considered that, it's, it's so tight when you, if you're coming, like, let's say you're coming into the site from Reed Street. The building is there, you, it's really tough to take any sort of left or right turn to get around there. So that'll remain really as a pedestrian path for, you know, again, for drop off. Uh, the people that use Reed Street to drop off as well as for staff that are parking along Reed Street. But we did not think that opening up that area for vehicular circulation, um, was, was practical.
Okay, thank you.
Where were the employees that are doing the construction there? Is there any site parking for them? Because all the parking on, you know, Duffy Way there is not gonna be enough for the people that are working on the school when it gets rolling.
Yep, so I mean, there's, there'll be, you know, a section of those spaces used. And then we'll, we'll also have some, um, you know, some areas, we, we're showing some areas around the, the, mostly on the south side or the southwest corner of the new building. There'll be some, uh, you know, gravel lay down areas and, uh, additional contracted parking spaces. I mean, it, it is a very tight area, you know, I mean, there's particularly during, you know, the first phase, uh, which is. In the spring of next, scheduled to start in the spring of next year, um, while schools in session, you know. They are gonna be fairly constrained with space, of course, they're not gonna have, you know, within that few months period of time, they're not gonna have. All, all the foundation put in yet, so they, they'll have place to move around. And then over the summer, they'll be taking up a little more real estate in front of the school temporarily. So that'll offer some more, you know, space, obviously they'll have more space in the summer months.
I know when there were, I, I worked at the high school, m- middle school project, and I know that people were packing at the time at the tennis courts because they were being done over. You know, I mean, it's like, just so you don't have all the. Construction workers packing. You know, I mean, up and down the people's neighborhoods. Which would just make it matters worse with the traffic and everybody going, going to school.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we, we can certainly. You know, as we define those, those plans more, we can certainly share them with you. We, we did not put them in the package, however, um. You know, there's still some things to be, to be ironed out, but certainly we could share them if, if the board would like that.
Yeah, cuz that, that's something to consider, because when it's, what do you project for full peak when it's, when it's growing? How many people on site, you know, I mean, you're looking at a hundred plus.
Yeah, I think a building of this size will be like a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty at the peak.
Yeah, yeah, if you don't supply parking for them, they're just gonna be parking in everybody's neighborhood.
Yeah, the intent is that they're parking within the construction fence. And as Chris said, the fence moves for, we have five phases, I think, ten different phases altogether. Two of them encompass two summers. But it'll be, you know, there'll be no parking and there'll be no tolerance of parking on the high school or the middle school parking lots or, or, um. I, I mean, a public street is a public street. So, but you can't restrict somebody from parking on that, but they'll be strongly encouraged to park within the, the site fence.
Right, just cuz I'm like, if everyone's packing on Lower Reed Street or anything, you know, I mean, it's just more of a traffic hazard with everybody going to. Drop their kid off and pick their kid up.
We'll be adding more signage for the Lower Reed Street parking, um, because some of that will be designated for teacher parking with the loss of some of the parking where the school is being built. And some will remain drop off, so there'll be additional signage on the parking that exists today.
I mean, cuz, you know, you know, when people start work early and they're beating, beating the teachers, they're all those parking spaces that, at the track are gonna be gone.
Again, those are the ones that we are gonna assign, so those gonna be, those are gonna be signed differently and used differently during construction.
Signs, signs are one thing, you know, I mean, teachers probably should get badges or something from the school. Anybody else?
Yep, anything else on stormwater management or utilities? Okay, we're gonna hand it over to. Our traffic consultants, Brennan Consulting, they're gonna talk about, a little bit about traffic and with a focus on the intersection redesign at. Taunan and Division Street.
My name is Chris Emilias and I have Conrad Knutman with me here. We're from Brennan Consulting and we performed the traffic impact study for the project. And we are now working on the, uh, intersection design of Duffy Way, Division Street and Taunan Avenue. So we performed the traffic impact study some months ago. We, how we analyzed the three, uh, primary intersections around the school. Uh, the intersection of Duffy Way, Division and Taunan, um, Division and Reed. And Reed and the driveway coming up from Duffy Way. And we performed traffic counts, um, in the AM and PM peak hours, uh, obviously during school. And we performed the analysis to look out a seven-year future, um, which is part of the methodology to perform the traffic impact study. Um, and then we added the additional students. We all know we have three hundred and forty students presently in the fifty-five administrative personnel. And we're going to seven hundred and sixty students and approximately a hundred, uh, personnel, administrative personnel and, uh, teachers. Uh, so we, we added the additional trips based on the additional students. We reanalyzed the three intersections, um, for what we call operating characteristics. Things like delay, uh, queue. Blah, volume over capacity analysis. Basically you're looking at how much delayed time is presently at the intersections for each approach. And how much delayed time will be there seven years post the construction of the school. And what we found was, not just in the analysis, but of the numerous trips out, um, at the school. Uh, was that it's, it really runs actually quite well from a traffic perspective. Um, the delays were ten, eleven, twelve seconds in that range for each of the intersections. And, uh, when we did the analysis and we added the additional trips based on the additional students. A little bit of delayed time was added a couple of seconds here and there, but for the most part, really all of the intersections stayed at a level of service A. Or B. And, and what we look at in intersections, we literally grade them as you would a, 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 a paper in school. A is the best and F is failing. And you have variations from A to F, all dependent on the delay. So we found that there really was not a, uh, a big impact primarily because the intersections are. Have, uh, excess capacity right now. Um, then we looked at, um, Duffy Division and Taunan Avenue. And as you, Chris described, the, um, the need to have Duffy Way really move north. We found that the whole intersection, uh, Taunan Avenue also need to move north. And now presently, we have an intersection that, you know, we call, uh, uh, three legs, um, and three approaches. So each of those three roads is an approach and a leg. We are adding a fourth leg, which is the bus loop to the intersection. So now it's a, it's a four-way intersection, but we only have three approaches. It's only, it's a one-way for the bus loop, so we don't have that approach coming into the intersection of the bus. So right now we're the process of creating that design. Both working with Chris on the drainage and also the, the, uh, geometrics of the intersection itself. It does not ward the signal, not even close, so that's, uh, was always an initial concern. And basically, we're, again, working on the, the geometry of the intersection itself. And, uh, as someone had mentioned earlier, we're looking at how we would construct the intersection, um, in phases. So that we maintain, uh, traffic throughout the reconstruction process of the intersection. And I think we also need to, uh, talk to Chris, I don't know if you met or talked with the hiring superintendent about. There's a possibility that this intersection could be done, um. Without any, uh, you know, just shutting it down and, and constructing it, I don't know, six, seven weeks, I think, it could be done. But if that's not workable, then certainly we can do it in phases where we construct each part like a puzzle, basically. So that's, that's where we're at now, um. And, uh. Now, is there any questions?
I don't hear any.
Okay, well, if anything else comes up, we can, we can always circle back to this.
Right, right, and we're, we're in the design phase of the, of the plans of, of, you know, the intersection itself. Or again, as you can see from the existing to the proposed, you can see the whole intersection has shifted north. Um, but still obviously within the right of way. But it, but there's, there is plenty of right of way out there to do this.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So we're gonna move on to building design now. And Mariana Hernandez from our office is going to walk everybody through the design of the structure itself.
Good evening, everybody, uh, so we saw some of the images of the building already in the, in the site is. Pictures, so I'm gonna move, uh, more into the materials. I'm gonna show you the floor plan and how it works. We're gonna see some of the overall elevations, a couple of renderings that are, that you already saw. Uh, building material distribution, uh, it's just a graphic showing how the building materials are. And some of the samples of the building, building materials we're using. This is an old masonry building with large scale metal panels at primary elevation and some cordon wool. Brick is the predominant material in the building and it relates to the adjacent middle school, high school and the Union Street corridor. That we have some variations in the brick texture and patterning just to bring a little bit of variety to the exterior without any major additional costs. And you go to the next, so on the first floor plan, we have the administration area at the north. We have the. We have the gymnasium and the cafeteria. And we have. The service area down south from the cafeteria and then the classrooms. That are, everything is organized around that center courtyard that Mike described earlier. The classrooms are organized in neighborhoods or pods per grade. To bring a sense of a closer community to the kids. And on the first floor, we have clockwise from the north. We have first grade and then second grade to the south, each class, each level has two pods. Between the pods, we have those exterior learning environments that Mike described. They can be accessed from the inside via the exterior, the stairs are located in the pods and they also can be accessed through the corridors in the middle of it. Of the school, you can go back to the next slide. Sorry, to the next slide. On the second floor, which we can approach through those centers. Stairs right across the street, right across from the entrance. We have the media center, a maker space, music room and ad rooms and and the third and fourth grade. Classrooms, again, they are located clockwise from the north. So that's the third grade classrooms and then on the south, we have the fourth grade classroom. They're stacked on top of the, you know, it's first stacks with third and fourth stacks with second. And again, they use the stairs to access directly those exterior learning environments. You can go to the next one. So here we have some some overall elevations of the building where you can see the main material, it's brick. We have two colors of brick, they are shown more drastic on these elevations that they actually are than this is for graphic purposes. So we have the main building material, the main brick, brick type one. Which covers most of the building and I'll show that better in a different graphic coming down. And then the brick type two, which is the one that is showing darker and is showing some lines. Those are reveals that we have incorporated into the design every two feet. And now you can you can move to the next one. Okay, here are some of the renderings, you already saw some of these, so we have an aerial view on the top left. And the entrance approach right underneath. And here, you can see the metal panel location is mostly there on the on the maker space volume that projects out. And above the. To the left, if you move to the left, above the guidance area, we have some metal panel and the whole entrance is framed by these. Phenolic panel ceiling canopy and we have the cordon walls that connect, actually, Mike, can you go back to the floor plans again, one second? Sorry, okay, you can stay there. So on the floor plans, we have cordon wall on the north and on the south. Connecting through that courtyard, so we we have a visual connection from the north of the side to the south of the side. Through the courtyard, it's all like cordon wall that connects those two main parts of the building, so go back to, sorry, Mike. Go back to where we were. Okay, and then, so we hear on the right side on the top, we see that learning environment. Area that we already saw, we have some sun shading elements on the exterior, on the south facades. And we also have some bay windows that will bring a little bit of color on those. And then. If you move down from from that view, we have the view of the courtyard looking south. We can see there an exterior learning stair that we have there and that connects to an interior one too. Which is, it will be really nice, we're still working on that design. And then we have some, there was a request for some pops of color in the building. And we are trying to achieve that by bleeding out from some of the windows, from the interior treatment on the windows to the outside. Most of the fenestrations are punch windows, the cordon walls are highlighting these main corridors. And the intersections between the pods, you can keep going. Okay, so this one is a graphic plan that shows the materiality of the of the building. So the first building type one, it's going mostly around the whole building. It's the main material, as you saw in the other views too, brick type two happens on the volume for the gym and court. For the volume of the gym and cafeteria, that is a higher volume and also inside the courtyard. And on the points where the exterior learning environments meet the corridors of the building. Then we have the cordon wall that, as I said, connects the north and south. Of the building through the courtyard and then we also have cordon walls on the points where where the pods meet. And on the on the stairs, on the stair volumes. And on the clear stories of the of the gym and cafeteria space. And then we have CMU finish on the service area of the loading dog and all the mechanical equipment area. You can go to the next slide. Okay, this shows the type of materials that I've been talking about. We have the the main material being brick, then we have some CMU, we have the phenolic panel framing the entrance, we have metal panel mostly. Around the entrance and some accenting some of the cordon wall conditions and we have some. Cordon walls and window openings, our window to wall ratio right now is 24.3%. Which is very good based on what we require. You can go to the next one and this is my last slide. The next. Mike, can you move to the next one? This is my last slide and it's actually a close up of the material that we are using, these are. The samples that we have in the office for the materials. So there's the CMU, there's the two on the top, you have the, on the top brick, you have the color one, which is the field. Brick, if you will, then the color two, which is down below, it's it's closing color, a little darker, but mostly it's more. It has more of a rough texture to it and this is the one where we're going to have that reveals every two feet vertically. The phenolic panel on the top right, which is wood looking material, is a composite rain screen. That looks like wood and that is framing the main entrance as a canopy. Then we have the color that we chose for the metal panels, this color will be all the metal elements on the building, the metal trims, the metal panels. The window frames and cordon wall frames and as well as the sun shade. And then we have, and I forgot to mention before, that's the precast stream. Material that will have the precast seals on the windows and there's also a couple of elements that will have some precast. On the on the facade. Like the bench in the front that we did not mention before. So that is all for me, if you have any questions.
Anybody? Thank you.
Okay, we're available for questions, I suppose.
Does anybody have any questions? Randy?
Nope, no, I'm good.
Charlie? Charlie still here?
Yep, no, I'm still here, no, I don't have any questions, it looks good. It's going to be a big endeavor, but we'll see how it goes.
Jared?
I'm good, one of the benefits of being on the building committee is being intimately involved with this. Project outside of planning, so I'm good, thank you.
No, I think for right now, I'm good.
Yeah, I think I'm good for right now too, I know you have to. Go before zoning, you know, to get some stuff. Rob Rose is still with us, Rob, do you have any questions at this time?
The only thing that I saw was the, there's an under drain that looks like it's dumping into the baseball field that's going to stay. And I'm just wondering how much water that that under drain is going to kind of pick up. And dump into the dump into the baseball field, because it all drains down and then goes towards the senior center and then that back corner.
Mike Dowhan, I believe that's the under drain for the synthetic turf field.
Yeah, so, sorry, I'm going back, go ahead, Chris, I want to try to go back to the plan.
Just escape, Mike, and you can go back.
Rob, sorry, is that the under drains for the field itself, Rob?
No, I was, it was bordering, it looked like parking area.
Okay, yeah, so there's, we have a, we have like a curtain drain, under drain.
Yep, curtain.
Right along, yeah, it's right along, like, right along the large northwest parking lot between the abutting property and the. Parking lot, so that that is basically. Because we had to raise the raise the parking lot up a little bit based on the building elevation. Under existing additions, the runoff from those, essentially, it's just the lawns and, you know. Driveways from the abutting properties, it normally, it under existing additions, it basically made its way into a little. Kind of a natural landscape gutter and worked its way around towards the baseball field. So because of the elevation of the parking lot, we put that under drain in there and we piped it out. Right, there's a little head wall right there. I can, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head as to how much flow heading. But it is a mixture of, you know, it doesn't get any of the Reed Street roadway, it's just the, it's just the. Residential properties just to the north over there.
And that's, and is what you're showing on the on the computer right now, is that the most up to date? Because what I saw was a flared end section that went even further on the last plan, on the last set of plans that I was given.
Yeah, I believe, yes, the the flared end is goes further down on the side of the parking lot. And that was only because of the grade, in order to get the pipe positive drainage out of there, we had to bring that head wall a little bit lower. You know, I mean, we can, we can certainly look at how to just make sure that that gets dispersed, so it's not just a, you know. You know, a stream of water over there.
Yeah, if you if you look at the contours, it's just, it's all going towards the.
Yeah.
So that's it, that was really the only thing that I saw.
Pat Brennan, do you have any? Comments or anything? Have you been satisfied with everything so far?
Yeah, I just got revised stormwater plans and stormwater report late last Thursday, so I just really got into that today. To my understanding, this is design review with the planning board. Typically, my comments are related to site plan review. With the drainage and the stormwater and that type of thing. The package that I got was actually the package from the zoning board. Which. They they provided all of the information that I would typically need for a site plan review. Chris Racine from SMMA has been in contact with me for over the last couple of months, kind of discussing. Various aspects of the design, like I said, I just got into it, but. Going through the entire drainage today, you know, I have some minor comments that I'll review with Chris, but I don't see anything major there that can't be overcome. The the only other question, and I guess it would be for the zoning board, because this is design review right now. Is the traffic, if you're going to want it peer reviewed, if so, I'd send it out to Gillon Associates for peer review. I have not done that because I have not been asked to do that.
What do you think, Rob?
At this point, I'm going to take it under advisement, I gotta, I'm going to have to discuss this with with everybody else. I think it should be addressed and it's, I do think it's the traffic engineer involved in this to review, I think that's, I think it should be addressed.
Yeah, so when we reviewed, because I was involved with the review of the middle school, high school project back in 2010, roughly, that timeframe. It did go through site plan review as well as design review with the planning board. I did. Ask Attorney Galvin about this one for site plan review and. His email response was that he thought it was needed, but he was going to check into it and I. I didn't follow up with him, so I'm not sure why there isn't site plan review along with it, not to throw a wrench into it, but. The the other schools went through that process.
If I may just let you know, it was actually Attorney Galvin who told us the site plan review was not required for this project when we met with the town manager and. And John, I believe you were at that meeting with Doug.
I I was there, Lorraine, and I'm questioning whether Bob was thinking of something else because. The high school and the middle school, we did do a site plan review. And I talked to the chairman of the planning board at that time and he said definitely was required. And to be honest, I forgot about it till almost today, but I think we should take a look at it, I think probably we have to do a site plan review.
My my review, yeah, my review is going to cover, I'm looking at it as if I'm reviewing it for site plan review. I was also contacted by conservation's peer reviewer and they're going to rely on my stormwater review for conservation as well, so. I'm looking at it for all three boards at this point, the planning, zoning and. And conservation, so, you know, from my perspective, I'm reviewing it as if it was going through site plan review. Just so that we capture it all, we don't have to do something, redo something again down the road.
In my, in my opinion, I think there should be a site review on it, just because it's town building, it better be able to pass. If we set the standards for everybody else in town, to make sure they can follow them, the town building better conform.
Well said, lead by example.
You know, I don't know why the town would get a free pass, you know what I mean, doesn't make any sense. But I think there should be, you know, a traffic study done just because. There's going to be so much traffic going through there at certain times between all three schools in the same area. And you're increasing the traffic flow with combining the two other schools there.
Pat, did you say they did a site, a traffic review, peer review for the other two schools?
Yes, yes, we did.
If we did it for those two, I think we should probably do it for this, not that I doubt what your traffic people are saying, but I think another check on it is probably the right way to go.
And with the new situation with with COVID-19 here and everything like that, how many people are going to want to put their kids on a bus? I'd actually have more drive up traffic at this point.
So can I just ask two process questions, the peer review of the traffic that gets handled directly through you guys, or do we need to do anything for that? Who is initiating that?
Pat, you can initiate that, can't you?
As long as one of the two boards tells me to.
Well, I'll make a motion if someone would like to second that to the board.
I'll second it.
All right, let's have a vote on that motion, Randy?
Yes.
Jared? Jared still there? Charlie?
Yes, I agree with that and vote in favor.
I did a video and I didn't realize it was on mute still, Jared is yes.
Okay, John?
Yes.
Right, and I'm Mike Corbett and I vote yes, I think we have a traffic review on that, just with the new situation with COVID-19 and everything to. If you might want to take the bus.
And then just my second process question since. And then just my second process question, since Bob had originally, I just looked at the date, it was back in January when we met, went through all the permits required. Can we just ask for clarification from him on the site plan review process, please?
Tony, are you still on?
Yes, I am, but I'm not sure, I was not at that meeting in January, and I'm not sure what Bob. Told everyone, but I can check with him tomorrow to forward that list along, I just don't know it right now.
Bob was on a telephone call on that particular meeting. And like I said, when I talked to. Can't think of his name, Henderson.
Oh, Tom Henderson?
Tom Henderson, who was chairman of the planning board at the middle school, high school. He said it definitely went through a site plan review. I think it should, but yes, we can double check.
Yeah, you might have said, I just don't know, I just don't, I'm not saying yes or no, I just I just don't know what he said.
Just for your reference, the date of that meeting was January thirty first of this year.
Okay, I'll check on that tomorrow.
Thank you.
And Tony, when you get a answer on that, can you have yourself or Bob send out an email to the planning board, so we have that on record?
Will do.
You know, I mean, because like I said, I think it should. Be held to the town standards, if it's a town building, if we make everybody else in town conform to the town standard.
Yeah, I'll check, I'll check with person tomorrow morning and send an email.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Tony.
So I think for us, we just. We're anticipating being back on in front of you on June eleventh, we have our ZBA hearing on June second.
Yes, the only potential problem I see with that is if we don't have the. Report from the ZBA by that time, hopefully they'll have it written up for us, so that we don't, nothing gets stalled out and delayed. Because I'm sure you got, I know there's several variants that you got for in there.
It's just one variance we're going for.
And that's what, parking?
Parking size.
Okay.
Ratio, or the the exact variances ratio of. Parking space size, we're asking for a hundred percent parking spaces nine by eighteen instead of thirty percent, which is outlined in the zoning regulations.
Correct.
Same exact thing that was asked for at the middle school, high school.
Yep.
Rob, do you think that'll be any problem getting that decision back to us?
I'll push it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does anybody else?
With Rob still on the line, any any delay that becomes incurred costs tax dollars at the end of the day, this is a town project, so. Anything that can be done for the timely issuance of zoning board. Zoning board decision appreciated.
Don't worry, Jared, I'm on it.
All right, have any conclusions? And write it up.
Yeah, yeah, it's, you've got a chairman now that knows how to use Microsoft Word, so it's usually, it's 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 been easier now.
Either that or a pencil, Rob.
Nice.
I think that's our presentation for you tonight, unless you have any more questions for us.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I'm good.
Mike? What is that, John?
I'm all set.
Jared?
I'm good, thank you.
Charlie?
Yeah, I'm all set, thank you.
Randy?
All set, thank you.
Then I guess we're all set with you people. For for tonight.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
I just had a quick question, sorry, so is there any, aside from the topics we discussed, is there any specific. Information that you would like us to provide that for next, for the next meeting that we did not have for this or or in the actual application?
The plan seemed to be pretty completely, you have existing conditions and everything else like that on there. Does the building have shown any of the setbacks or anything like that in it? Lot lines and everything?
I don't have it in this, I have, I do have a setback plan that we had submitted to the zoning, to the ZBA that I could, you know, that we could share or provide you with.
Yeah, if you can do that, that way we. You know, know how situated on the from the property lines and stuff like that, just to make you make sure all the setbacks, which I don't think is gonna be a problem.
But we we do, right, we we're fine with all the building setbacks. And when, as well as the parking setbacks.
Yeah, so at least, you know, I mean, if you can send us a copy of that.
Sure.
That way everyone can access it and make sure, so we have it for our records. So we, you know, get this thing proceeding forward, and when you have finalized plans, you know, we need a copy of that, too, because are you making more changes to you anticipate to what you printed up so far?
And, you know, on the building or the site or or?
On anything, you know, I mean, are you are you gonna be changing any of the pages per se, or like if you have to redo the intersection over or changes for whatever reason? That's taught in Colonel Duffy and Division. Or is that pretty much set in stone?
We're not anticipating any major changes, but we are only in contract documents, early contract document stage. So we do have quite a bit of work to document and provide all the finished details, etc. But, you know, with that's really developing the, you know, the details needed to construct the project, we're not anticipating any major changes. To the scope that's been submitted to you.
But if you can get us the a set of plans with all the setbacks and everything like that, just. We have it for our record, and we can look at it for next time we need.
Yeah, we'll send that out.
All right, thank you. All right, before we go, Pat, can you stay before we, everybody leaves?
Yes, I can stay.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for the school project? All right.
All right.
I just also, I wanna, I wanna say thank you to Christine for helping out, getting this all set up, she's been very helpful throughout the whole process, so thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
And she's ours, you can't have her.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Bye. All right. Saying all right, for potential plans and upcoming activities.
Mr. Corbett, I'm gonna leave, I appreciate you letting me speak.
All right, all right, thank you, Rob.
We'll talk to you, see y'all.
All right.
All right, thank you.
See y'all.
Have, Pat, have you heard anything back about three sixty five Concord Street?
Just, just what you saw from Attorney Galvin, I I did not forward that to the applicant, but I can do that. Basically, just just for the board's information, they submitted a preliminary plan unit development plan for three sixty five Concord Street. I started looking at it, and based on what I looked at, it looked like they needed a number, and actually, it's it states the variances that they need right on the cover sheet. So they either need to go to ZBA first to to secure those variances, or it's gotta be submitted as a forty B. And honestly, I think, I don't think that that. Meet all the criteria to secure those variances, so it's probably gonna end up being a forty B project.
Okay, yeah, we personally, have we heard from them, did we reach out to them?
I talked to Kayla.
Yeah.
She was going to reach out to you, Pat, I believe, and to Rob. So she could get things going with the ZBA.
Okay.
And that was last week.
Yeah, I haven't heard from her yet, but I'm sure I will then.
Aren't you lucky?
You're being recorded.
I was just saying, he's lucky to talk to Kayla.
Nice. All right.
So that if that goes to a forty B, then we're out of it totally.
Yeah. Do we have anything else planned then? I think, I think I was it, Pat, you know, I mean, I was just wondering if. For Bob yet, because I know I haven't heard anything, but. Status quo.
Okay.
Thank you, Pat.
All right, thanks, guys, have a good night, and Christine, thank you.
All right. Does anybody else have any new activities since the last time we did this?
No, we go back to the meeting normally.
Yeah, I hear you on that. All right, yeah, so hopefully. Hopefully, we'll hail back from. Attorney Galvin on. If we need a site plan, because it's kind of crazy that we don't, but. Right, I said, I don't know why a town building wouldn't have to be approved, and you hold everybody else to the same standard.
Well, unless something's changed, Mike, since they did the high school, the middle school, I think that. I I don't think Attorney Galvin was thinking on it, because if it went to it for the other two schools, I'm sure it's gotta go to it for us.
Yeah, I would think so.
Yeah, I don't foresee why we wouldn't. Just strange that he would, he would say that, with where we're just so consistent.
All right, so I guess that's about it, Chrissy will have to reach out to two buds. Or. The design review, and when they get sent over the new plans with the. Modification.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, just reach out to them, so we can finalize that for them.
Okay.
We can maybe schedule them for the end of June, since three sixty five Concord Street might not be before us, and we already had the meeting scheduled, you know, I mean. I don't really want them to be scheduled for the eleventh when we do the school, I mean.
All right, sounds good.
Does anybody else have anything?
Are we gonna be getting new plans from the school? Or should I keep this monstrosity that's. Buying a lot of space in my home.
But didn't she more or less indicate that they weren't gonna make any major changes, so?
Yeah, I would, I would think you would have to hang on to them.
All right, I'll hang on to it.
Yeah, I mean, because she said there are gonna be no major changes that they foresee, and they're just gonna send us at least.
Make any major changes anyway.
You know, send us an email copy of the setbacks and everything in the building. So we're gonna just have a site plan, everything else is kind of on the, what we have with the existing conditions and everything.
Then after, then you can make very large paper airplanes with it.
All right, if nobody has anything else, do I hear a motion? Well, actually.
Close.
Huh?
I move that we close the meeting, I will second Jared Allen's all a second.
Chrissy, you know bills today?
No, nothing.
Not even for you?
No, I didn't, I'm gonna wait.
Okay. That works for me, all right, we have a motion and seconded. Randy?
Randy, yes.
Charlie?
Yes, Mike.
Jared?
Yeah, yeah.
Ron?
Ron, yes.
All right, Michael, yes, all right, thank you, gentlemen, and Chrissy.
All right, have a good night.
All right, everyone, good night. All right, thank you, Lisa.